Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we will call to order. Mr. Clerk, do we have a quorum?
Mr. Mayor, we have a quorum. Please sign in if you haven't done so already.
If we can get everyone to sign in, thank you. Nothing from the committee, the whole closed meeting. We have no edits. Are there any disclosures of potential pecuniary interest? Okay, seeing none, we have no presentations tonight. We have no delegations. But we do have a couple of briefings. So first of all, Lanny Hurdle, Commissioner of Community Services, will introduce Ken Folds, S.H.S. Consulting, who will brief council on their findings and the financial obligations faced by the service manager going forward with respect to the overall impact of the end of operating agreements and federal step-down funding. Commissioner Hurdle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I wanted to give counsel a bit of background before we get into the presentation. We, as staff, have flagged the issue of the step-down funding and end of operating agreement back in 2011 when we were working on updating the housing plan. And at the time, we identified that more review research was going to be required. So basically, what that means, it means that we anticipate that by 2036, the federal funding that we're currently getting for social housing will cease. So it will gradually decrease until 2036. So what we did is, in 2014, we did retain S.H.S. Consulting, and Mr. Ken Folds is here tonight to provide you with that presentation. But they completed a review and took about a year to go over all of the information and made sure that it was comprehensive. So the intent of tonight's meeting is to provide you with that detailed information, and you have a copy of the presentation in front of you, and to get some of your feedback as well. We will be reporting back to counsel with a complete formal report with recommendations on March 22nd, is what we're currently anticipating. So with that, I am going to pass it along to Mr. Ken Folds, who's going to provide the presentation, because I think that's obviously the most important part of tonight's meeting.
Thank you very much, Lanny. Mr. Mayor, members of counsel. My name is Ken Folds. I'm actually with Refact Consulting, and we were working together with S.H.S. Consulting. Unfortunately, my colleague Ed Starr from S.H.S. could not be here tonight, but I'm happy to present the team in his place. The information I'm about to provide you, we're trying to consolidate some very complex information in a very short period of time. So I'm going to try and give you the flyover with all the salient pieces, and we'll leave lots of time for questions and answers at the end. The study process that we engaged in was really involving in three important pieces. One was looking at the federal step-down of funding. The second was looking at EOA or expiry of operating agreement implications. And the third area was really to look at the rent supplement program. And again, to bring together findings from each of those modules into the fourth module, which is really the strategy and implementation plan to deal with the impacts that were identified in our report. Just a very brief overview of the portfolio as it exists now. As the designated service manager under the Housing Services Act, Kingston is responsible for a number of what are called prescribed projects. These include both brick-and-mortar projects, so physical projects that are owned and operated either by the local housing corporation, KFHC, a number of local community and sponsor groups. There's also a number of rent supplement units that are prescribed. These are typically contracted with either private landlords or some nonprofit housing providers, which provide assistance to make up the difference between what those tenants can pay and the market rent for the units. So together, these prescribed units make up about 2,215 overall. Interesting to note that over 90% of those units are provided on an RGI basis, and that means rent geared to income. So tenants in those units, based on what they can pay, a subsidy is provided for the difference between what they can pay and what the traditional rents would be for those units. Interesting also in the brick-and-mortar projects, there's a number of legacy programs under which they were developed. Each have different funding rules and funding formula, which adds to the complexity of this problem. It's important to note, though, that public housing, those units that are operated by KFHC, make up the majority of the brick-and-mortar projects. The provincial reform projects are the next largest, at about 750 units, and there's a few federal units under two different providers, that being Tippi Moza and Dutch Heritage. An important element here is what is called service-level standards. And in the legislation, service managers are obliged to maintain service-level standards in their area. What this effectively means is that the number of RGI units that are prescribed as the service-level standard must be maintained. In the case of Kingston, over 2,000 of the units are prescribed. There's a very high level of units that are prescribed, and that'll become important as we move on in the presentation. The other units that are actually provided on a non-discretionary basis, so all of the prescribed units I've talked about are required under legislation. There's also some units or funding that is provided on a discretionary basis. These are under a number of rent supplement programs in three particular areas: the Maiden-Kingston, Strong Communities Rent Sup, and the IEH Rent Supplement, accounting for, at a time of our report production, about 195 units. These units, the service manager has the authority to provide them or not. Obviously, the funding for these particular units is provided either through the province, and as a result, they don't have the same type of financial impact as the prescribed units. Two of the key concepts that are important here to understand is what happens in regards to federal funding and the expiry of operating agreements. In the case of federal funding, a number of those brick-and-mortar projects were provided on a cost-sharing basis. And traditionally, prior to the advent of the Housing Services Act, there was cost-sharing between the feds and the province on those particular projects. With the advent of the HSE, the city stepped into the role, under legislative obligations, to pay for the province's share. That was in 2000. However, the federal share has remained. It still flowed from the feds, but through the province. The challenge, though, is that those federal monies have remained fixed since that point in time, since 2000, notwithstanding that operating costs for providers have continued to increase since that time. The other caveat is that those federal dollars start to drop away as providers hit the EOA date, which we'll talk about in a second. So as was mentioned by Commissioner Hurdle, the federal dollars will continue to decline until they reach zero at around 2035. The expiry of agreements is a second key concept here. Previously, for those projects that were in the provincial reform suite of programs, there was an operating agreement between the provider and the province. And it was set, that agreement was set to expire at the same time as their mortgage matured, some 35 years usually, down the road from when they were constructed. So there's a change in the legislation, which nullified those operating agreements, but still created some obligations in terms of that point in time. The intent originally in the program was that the accountability arrangements between the provider and the funder would change at that point in time. The changes in legislation through the Housing Services Act, however, created some changes in those obligations. So the impact here is that those mortgage maturity dates are happening at the same time as the traditional agreement dates expired and the federal funding drops away. So this becomes a very important date in terms of understanding financial impacts, both for the providers and for the service manager in terms of their funding. The punchline of our analysis in looking at the operating side of the equation is that municipal subsidies for social housing are expected to increase to $20 million annually by the year 2035. That's an increase of about $10 million annually from the current subsidization level. On the capital side, one of the challenges is that the, as these buildings continue to age and require repairs, they're being funded at a certain level over time, but the needs are overtaking that funding requirement. As a result, the capital shortfall is projected by our calculations to be in the order of about $150 million accumulated by that time. Currently, that shortfall is about $22.7 million. So a little bit more, we'll get into the details of how we arrive at those numbers shortly. One of the important things to notice is that the impacts are not felt evenly by the providers out there in the community. It really depends on which program you're being funded under. So for instance, in the public housing program, you can see on a per-unit level, the subsidization rate is about $5,600 a door annually. In the rent supplement programs, you can see it's a little higher, at about $7,000. For some of the federal programs, it's a little bit lower. So the reality also, if you look at this in terms of the federal share, this is as at 2015. You can see that the federal share is more significant in some programs than it is in others. So obviously, the withdrawal of that federal money is going to hurt some providers more than others because of the share of federal funding that's going away. So when will those impacts occur? In this graph, the green shading indicates the total federal funding and shows the drop-off from 2012 outward. The lighter green shading is the total federal funding. The dark green shading is the debentures, and that is essentially the mortgages for the public housing share of the stock. The bars on the chart represent the dollars, the total dollars, in terms of when the EOA dates are encountered, as you can see the color coding there with light blue in public, orange in provincial reform, and the urban native, private, nonprofit, and rent sups. The public component of the stock is a bit older, therefore, the maturity dates will be encountered sooner. So you can see that the blue shading, those dates will be encountered earlier. The provincial reformed is newer, and therefore, its maturity date in terms of stock is going to happen a bit later, predominantly in that 2025 to 2030 range. When we look at the cumulative needs for the entire portfolio, what we're presenting here is the green line, which is the total current subsidization level. Current subsidy that's paid annually to those brick-and-mortar providers and the rent supplements is a little over $13 million, with, in the red bar, the municipal component being about $10.7, and the blue bar showing about $3.7, which is the current federal amount. As you can see, the blue bars show the federal decline in funding. It'll be substantially gone by about 2025 and completely gone by 2035. The reality is that as those subsidy costs continue to grow, the service manager, in this case, the city of Kingston, will be absorbing a larger share of the costs to provide those subsidies. And this is particularly poignant for two reasons. One, because the costs for those providers is increasing, therefore, the subsidy is increasing, and the federal amount is static and/or declining over that time. So what does this really mean? Well, in terms of the federal step-down, the share of $3.7 million that currently makes up about 20% of the stock will be cut in half by about 2021 and eliminated completely by 2034. Increasingly, this means the service manager will have to make up that gap for those particular providers. As mentioned, the municipal share would go from about $10 million to $24.5 million, but as that debt retires, about $4.5 million in debt will retire during that time. So the net increase to the municipalities is about $10 million. Those federal impacts will be felt largest in public housing and rent supplements because they tend to have a larger share of federal funding in those programs. The other thing is, in the federal programs, the urban native providers have a much higher level of subsidization, and those dollars are all federal dollars. So when those programs go away, those providers are going to feel the impact very dramatically as compared to others. And as we'll talk about, the high RGI levels that we had flagged earlier and those service-level standards mean that the service manager is going to have a substantial ongoing commitment in terms of that subsidy funding. In terms of the EOA realities, one of the things that we wanted to do as part of the project was reflect on what the legislation says that you have to do as a service manager. And under the terms of the RFP, we were asked to secure a legal opinion. So we did talk to some lawyers about the legal implications to make sure it was clear what the obligations of service managers and providers would be. What we found through that opinion is that the obligations for most of the programs, notwithstanding that EOA date, the obligations to fund those providers will continue for the service manager, and there will be a continued relationship. The only group that's accepted from that is those two federal providers that you have. The other thing that was fairly significant is, one of the options for mitigating was to use alternate rent structures as opposed to rent geared-to-income structures. In talking to the lawyers about this, it became fairly clear that you had to follow the letter of the legislation so that you couldn't have substitutions. You had to use an RGI scheme on those units in order for them to be counted towards your service-level standards. So the reality of this is that there's a continued significant cost to the service manager despite the fact that EOA is going to be encountered. The other side of the equation is building conditions, and as we noted, there's a fairly sizable capital requirement. Currently, about $27.5 million, which if you deducted reserves and contributions that were on account, it would be reduced to an unfunded amount of about $22.7. And that is expected to continue to grow if it's funded at the same level as it is now. The FCI, which is a facility condition index, it's a rating for the quality of repairs as compared to the replacement value of the building. It's used as an indicator to determine when you should be including investment or not. And the FCI shows a poor rating, starting in 2021 and 2022, without those capital infusions. So the reality here is, as that capital gap grows, the risk of not continuing to invest in those properties, they start deteriorating, and that's the main message in that regard. In terms of those EOA impacts, then, there's really two sides of the equation, the operating and the capital. As we noted, there's a sizable component, an increase, and again, the subsidy costs are going to continue to be the most significant in the public housing and provincial reform program. We've done some analysis and looked at some potential for cost savings inside the envelope pre-EOA, before those dates happen. We found that there might be potential for some, but not a lot of savings, only about 2.6 of manageable, 2.6% of manageable costs. For those projects that have conventional mortgage, they will have renewals prior to the EOA dates, and given the low-rate environment we're in now, and it's likely projected for the next few years, you're likely to save some money there as well, and those have been projected. As we noted on the capital side, the current unfunded amount is $22.7 million. If you actually added up all the capital requirements as defined in Asset Planner, a tool that the housing branch here uses, those capital costs would amount to about $200 million. If you deduct what is in reserves now and the capital funding that would take place over that time, which would account to about $50 million, you're left with an unfunded amount of about $150 million. That's how we arrived at that number. In terms of those capital pressures, what we've shown here is the total requirements in the blue, the blue-shaded area. So you can see that there's a fairly substantial backlog as of the current date, and that there will be peaks and valleys in terms of those capital requirements over the next 20 years. In looking at the red bars, that's public housing. The green bars are provincial reformed, and the purple bars are federal. So you can see that the large share of the capital requirements come in the form of the public housing portfolio, and to a lesser extent, the provincial reform portfolio. And that generally follows with the proportional share that they have in your portfolio. So another big part of the equation was looking at how do we mitigate the impacts that we've projected. So on the operating side, again, we see a net increase of about $10 million annually by 2035, and some of the offsets that we looked at there, again, we identified those pre-EOA mortgage renewals, and based on some sensitivity analysis, we figured you might be able to save about $850K in that regard. We also did a review of some operational costs throughout the portfolio. We found a few areas where you might be able to glean some savings, but it really only amounts to about $250,000K. The good news is that those savings once found would be ongoing annual savings. In terms of another option, we looked at the ability to reduce the service-level standards. At the time we calculated, you were actually over the service-level standard. So if you were to administrate strictly to the letter of the law and only provide those service-level standard units, you might be able to save a little bit of money, but frankly, it's not that much in the scale of things. Another area we looked at is using your discretionary rent supplement programs to substitute for your prescribed rent supplement programs. So it's basically using provincially-funded units to substitute for your municipally-funded units. The caveat there is that those provincial funding does run out in the 2021 to 2023 period, so that it would only be substitution for a period of time. It wouldn't be in perpetuity. The reality is, you might be able to glean some savings annually for that period. The transition process to that might be a little bit challenging. The other area we looked at was providing alternative rents. Notwithstanding the legal opinion, which we secured, which suggested that you could only use RGI, in some of the discretionary programs, there's a slightly different rent structure that ends up being cheaper on a per-unit basis. So it's subsidizing folks at a shallower amount. If you used those opportunities, you might be able to save between $160 to $1.8 million. That $1.8 million number is on the high side. I won't bore you with the details of it, but it relates to how Ontario Works and ODSP treat rents versus how social housing treats rents. And we can talk a bit about, more about that if there's a question in that regard. On the capital side, we looked at a couple of different opportunities in terms of how you can try and leverage the equity that's been built up in the stock to date. You know, that equity is not insignificant. If the whole portfolio was paid down today, it would probably have a replacement rating of about $270 million. The reality, though, is that you wouldn't be able to access all that money to leverage it on a loan basis. Typically, you can only borrow on a, maybe a 50% to 60% loan-to-value ratio. So in the most optimum situation, in our review, you might be able to leverage about $60 to $70, almost $80 million. The problem with that is that once you do that borrowing, the debt service costs that come with that, at this point, you would have been retiring debt. Now you have to add back that service debt to pay for the borrowing that you're going to do. And if you want to actually borrow more than these amounts, the debt service would increase past the subsidy provisions that we've provided for. So in a nutshell, the reality is you can access some of that equity to help deal with the problem, but when you look at what you can do, it's only about half of what the projected shortfall is going to be. So there's going to have to be some other creative ways to find that, to deal with that gap. So the punchline in terms of operating mitigation options, really, you can work to reduce some of those costs using targeted cost reductions, some potential income mixing, and some rent sup substitutions, and that will help get some ongoing savings. And some of those you could actually realize before those projects mature. If you were able to get some legislative flexibilities around how they define rent and how you count units toward service-level standards, there might actually be some decent savings here, up to $1.8 million. But there is some legislative changes that would be required to achieve that. On the capital side, there's certainly some opportunity to address the backlog by refinancing some of the equity, but there are some limits on that debt service capacity. And the challenge here, in terms of doing that, is trying to make the best use of that leveraged equity. So if, for instance, you're talking about redevelopment scenarios, you want to make sure you're trying to deal with the capital backlog and maximize any of that equity that you leverage. So the overall synopsis is, obviously, you're going to see a fairly substantial increase in subsidy as that federal funds continue to decline. The costs increase, and the projects hit those dates. This is going to have an impact on you, not only as a service manager under legislation in terms of providing, but you're also a shareholder of KFHC, so you have skin in the game. You have a direct responsibility to make some decisions in that regard, and it's a substantial part of your stock. There's certainly some cost adjustments, savings, and some maneuvering that you can do to help limit some of those cost increases, but as noted, they won't be able to fill the gap. They won't get you all the way there. And certainly, when we look at the capital side, the solutions and the equity that we think you can leverage at this point are definitely beyond those capacities. So there's some need for additional flexibilities, and I think some assistance, both at the provincial and federal level. In terms of strategic directions, what can you do now to try and deal with that? In the first area, obviously advocacy. Really, you know, the SHIRP program, as counsel may remember, was a good renovation program that helped deal with some of those capital shortfall. We certainly hear rumblings about a spring budget from the federal government for infrastructure. So obviously, there may be something on the doorstep here to help deal with some of those capital pieces, but some advocacy for that's going to be important. Those rent sup discretionary programs that are set to expire at 2021 and 2023, perhaps trying to get the province to push that horizon out, provide a little bit more funding and longevity for those would give you more flexibility. And certainly, last but not least, freeing up that definition as it relates to how you define rent and how that counts towards service-level standards. Obviously, there's another important piece here in terms of active portfolio management. And when you're trying to work those rent supplement programs, the substitutions, you need to kind of really be mindful of the impacts and how tenants move, et cetera. Certainly, in the rent supplement program, we think there's some areas and some tools as that program becomes a bit more important that might be able to move things along. Cost savings and program effectiveness. As we noted, there is some cost savings. They are fairly modest in the context of the overall size of the problem, but certainly we can start, those could start to be pursued internally with providers right away. And every dollar saved there obviously helps to avoid downstream costs. And then finally, but certainly not least, the asset leveraging piece, really looking at those options of how best to liberate the equity that exists out in the stock. When it comes to KFHC, as a shareholder, you have a certain amount of control in terms of deriving how that might happen. With your local partners who are delivering that housing out in the community, they are legal owners and entities of those properties. So trying to liberate that equity is a discussion that you have to have in a partnership relationship with them. It's not something you can simply dictate. So there's some relationship and technical exploration of how best to leverage the equity that's out there. We would note that obviously you're aware of some of the initiatives that are being tested at Rita Heights and some of the redevelopment, and some of that might go some way to help put a dent, certainly, in some of the capital issues that we've identified. But again, the concern overall is that it might not get you all the way there. So that's quite a bit to absorb. So that's quite a bit to absorb in a short period of time. Happy to take any questions from council.
Thank you very much. Deputy Mayor Boom.
Thank you, your worship, through you. So are we, are we the only municipality facing this? Or is this kind of an issue across Ontario? And I would assume probably maybe even in other provinces as well. So is there a larger strategy that's possibly being spoken about or talked about? Because it seems like these agreements were just sort of pushed down and here you go for years and then now all of a sudden, the funding's coming to an end. And let's just be realistic, municipalities don't have the taxing capability to be able to manage a program like this without some type of federal or provincial investment in continuance of capital dollars and operating dollars. So on a larger level, how is everybody else going to handle this? I don't think we're alone. So I guess that would be my question.
So I guess, through the chair, you're absolutely not alone. I think provincially, you are one of 47 service managers who face this same funding issue. The challenge, and that's really a product of the Housing Services Act, the legislation. So that makes it a unique Ontario issue. I will say though, that the question of federal funding withdrawal is something that's being felt nationally. So that's an issue all across the country and sector organizations are mobilizing to try and get the ear of the federal government to sustain their funding. The one challenge in terms of responding to that in the province is that the makeup of service managers' portfolio changes dramatically. So most people will have heard the news last week about Toronto Community Housing having a billion dollar capital issue. Obviously, the scale of the problems that they face are different than what Kingston faces. But even the composition of the programs that your providers are in, the size of your LHC, all of those things are variables that are different from every service manager. So while there are some responses that are possible in a common way, there are some unique realities of how the portfolio in your area is that you would have to respond to.
Commissioner Hurdle.
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to add that it is one of the issue that has been in part discussed, I believe at AMO and at FCM as well in terms of this issue overall and the declining and eventually no more funding from the federal government. So that's been flagged by a number of municipalities in terms of concern.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Holland.
Thank you, your worship, through you. A few questions. I guess first of all, so when you referred to the need to maintain the RGI, the levels of subsidy for RGI, that also refers to the number of RGI units too, right? The 2003 units are mandated by the legislation? Okay.
That's correct.
Okay. And so, so I'm a member of KFHC and the board, and we have, one of the most significant costs are insurance to maintain those RGI units. There's a move now towards sort of moving that cost onto the tenants through mandatory tenant insurance, not so much at this point with KFHC, but with other affordable providers in the city. And I'm just wondering if you can see any opportunity there for dealing with some of the operating costs in terms of funding savings with insurance rates?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I think obviously there's an opportunity there. And I think the real challenge when we start looking at those mitigating impacts is we can take a very financial approach to dealing with that, but we do have to be mindful of the impacts in terms of the residents and the tenants and those relationships. So there may be some cost savings opportunities there, but we do know that that also then pushes that cost onto the tenants under that particular scenario.
Yeah, thanks. I was thinking more in terms of like getting a really good deal with an insurance provider as opposed to passing on the cost. I completely understand the need to keep those costs at a minimum. So for, again, just trying to think of opportunities, other levels of government, another component with the housing equation, especially the RGI units, there are a significant number of people in those units who have health issues, whether it's a physical or mental health disability. Is there the potential, or have you seen in other jurisdictions at least, or other cities, where there is an influx of funds under the healthcare umbrella as opposed to in capital dollars for investment or operating dollars?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Typically, the funds that have flowed under those particular programs are to deal with those specific health issues. They wouldn't necessarily deal with the rent or the subsidization level. Having said that, there have been some specific programs set up. And the examples I would think of right away would be some rent supplement programs which are targeted towards those with mental health issues or those with long-term health issues. So other than earmarking those programs, in terms of providing subsidy in lieu of the subsidy you're already paying, it's usually really geared to the services as opposed to the accommodation typically.
Counsel Kingdom.
Thank you. Through you, your worship. Obviously, you can only spend more than you make for so long. At this juncture, what is our most likely road to success? That's obviously a really open-ended question, but it just seems like there's, something has to fill the void. What is filling that void at this moment?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I think the reality is, as you can see today, you're facing some not insignificant capital gaps. There's about 22.7 million on that capital side and unfunded. We're always mindful that, you know, those are best estimates based on the conditions of the projects today. Perhaps through some creative programs like SHIRP and those, it'll help defray some of those costs over time. But the reality is, if the level of capital is not increased to apply to those problems, the projects are going to deteriorate. On the operating side, again, there's a couple of variables that can change. For instance, in the rent supplement portfolio, if the market rents happen to drop a little bit and you're able to negotiate better deals with private landlords, there may be some savings there because the subsidization level you have is shallower. On the other hand, in an economy where low-income people in those RGI households are poorer, that subsidy actually increases. So that problem can kind of cut both ways for you. Again, I think in looking at the mitigation opportunities we've provided here, trying to look at operational cost savings, trying to find any strategic management opportunities to try and work, work with the funding substituted in discretionary funding. On the capital side, leveraging the equity that you have and trying to capitalize on infrastructure programs as they come up. I mean, that's really the best context that we have right now for managing those gaps as we project them. So the good news is there's still some time to deal with the problems that are coming. I think maybe to the earlier question, one of the other issues is that some service managers in the province haven't actually gone to this level and understood the impact that they're facing. So if you don't know the impact that you're facing, it's going to be kind of hard to come up with a plan. I think the benefit here is that in council's wisdom, this program's, or this study was funded to help you start grappling with that problem.
I guess the concern I have is even if we do execute all those potential things perfectly, we still may end up significantly short. That's just a concern that I have. It just seems like such a huge problem, but.
Mr. Leibman.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Just to add to that, and I think, I apologize if this is an obvious statement, but one of the things that wasn't included in the slides that will be in the final report is the year-over-year tax increases that are associated with these dollar amounts. And I know $10 million is a large amount of money in itself, but when you look at the percentage increase over the next even, you know, eight to 10, you know, years, we're looking at 6%, 7% increases in the housing program compared to the city trying to keep a 1.5% tax increase. So we're going to be quadrupling the expected amount of tax increase each year for this function. So that shows you who's, for, I think the term was used, who's holding the bag. It's the city of Kingston and our tax rate, which will be going up because of these housing implications.
So I have a couple of questions, and I apologize, I think, because the graph went by a little bit too quickly, but the step down is, is it linear or is it accelerating? I'm just trying to get a sense of when, when we're really going to see the move. It looks like it's, so it's fairly gradual for a couple more years, is that right? How would you describe that?
Yeah, I think, Mr. Mayor, in terms of the overall costs, we had to make some assumptions in terms of projecting what the impacts are forward. So therefore, the green line is maybe a bit more linear than what actually might happen. It's a projection. I think the reality in terms of bottom line impact though, is really the red bars. So as that federal funding starts to decline, you can see maybe a little bit more of an acceleration post of 2017. And as that goes away, you're sort of getting it on both ends. So the federal money's dropping away and your obligations to providers continue to increase.
So when you talked about strategic options moving forward, and you mentioned cost savings and program effectiveness, did that, did that include only from the perspective of the service manager itself or together with the service providers in terms of potential reorganization or merging or eliminating duplication of administrative services, for example?
So, Mr. Mayor, in terms of the cost savings, the, I guess the body of evidence is mixed in terms of some of the savings that might be gleaned through amalgamations. I have a former life with the city of Ottawa, and shortly after amalgamation up there, the two largest providers merged. It was done on the basis of cost savings, but I'm not sure that that was ever actually achieved. Having said that, there certainly are opportunities, particularly for small providers who find it very difficult to manage with, you know, perhaps enough fund to cover half an FTE for a property manager. There's some opportunities there in terms of shared services, and you could go as far as amalgamating in some instances. In terms of the cost savings calculations that we did, we looked at the operating costs of all providers and tried to identify where there were significant outliers in certain line items. So where there was sort of a cluster and people were performing about the same, we didn't think it was likely you were going to find some savings. But where there were some outliers, that's where we identified those calculations. And again, in our final report, there'll be some language around that. But it was primarily from the basis of those savings and trying to glean those with providers.
Thank you. Next on my list is Counsel Hutchison.
Thank you, your worship. The, it calls for in one of the slides, projected EOA impacts, the shortfall is up to 150 million by 2035. What's the minimum amount? This must be a bracket number. They always are bracket numbers. So it's something to 150 million. So what is that number? It's not shown here.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. That would actually be the projected floor. Yeah, because the.
That's up to, so.
Yeah, so I think that the challenge here is that the capital projections, as you can imagine, based on the assumptions going out and what could happen between now and then, are a little bit challenging. But basically, we projected out that the total impact is going to be about 200 million. And based on the contributions, if you continue to make those on a steady state, and if you continue to use the reserves that exist today, that would knock about 50 million on over that 20-year period. So the precision with which we can project out 20 years, we're going to give that a plus or minus, but really, that's the floor of that number.
Also, the SHIRP program injected some capital expenditure. And I can remember seeing this, but I can't remember what it is, that that caught into the unfunded capital requirements by X amount. Do you know what that is? I think several millions of dollars. I'm just trying to get an idea. It seems to me that the sooner you inject your capital, the better off you're going to be over the long haul. It's going to be cheaper to invest today than 10 years from now.
Maybe, Mr. Mayor, just the exact figure staff might know that offhand, but in terms of the projections we did, we used the information that was resident in Asset Planner, and I believe that has been updated to reflect those SHIRP expenditures. So the numbers as we would see them would have allowed for that already in terms of the capital requirements.
And that's fair enough. What I'm asking is if you did it again, or some portion thereof. And that's, I was just looking for some idea about how much it takes to make a certain type of an effect on the capital, unfunded capital liability. I'm just trying to get an idea, you know, about strategies and.
Right. So, Mr. Mayor, I guess the way to look at that, when we look at this capital graph, is we've sort of looked at the cumulative 20-year impact in that 150 number. You can see that right now, you have, it's showing here a requirement of 27 million, but after you netted out reserves, it'd be about 22.7. So there's a backlog to deal with now, and certainly something like SHIRP could dramatically assist with that. And then elevated funding to try and deal close to the caps here as you went along. If you had elevated level of funding to deal with those caps and valleys, that might be a way. Obviously, there's another peak that you're going to have to plan for in 2024 there. But in some instances, I've certainly seen in other jurisdictions where they've talked about elevating the annual complement on a regular basis to try and account for some of those peaks and valleys.
And do you know what the?
Commissioner Hurdle.
Thank you. And through, Mr. Mayor, I just want to clarify that that program was a one-time program and it no longer exists. So there isn't that amount of money that's available out there that we could use now and invest. We do have to keep in mind that in order to make any kind of significant impact on 150 million dollars, required investment, I mean, it would have to be pretty significant. So even if we were to say we're going to invest a million or two, we would not get anywhere close to where we need to be in terms of the 150 million dollars. And to be quite honest with you, I don't see how the municipality can do that on its own without any upper level of government funding.
I'll just say I agree completely. I was just trying to get an idea of, the idea of how much you would be asking for roughly for our city and how soon. And I was just indirectly making the point that sooner is better and not waiting for this to, well, that's the whole point of this report, is don't wait, right? And so I'm just probing away at that. So do you know what the notions behind this, the concepts behind it? So do you know what the accumulated reserves for all the providers is? You've subtracted that off, and it sounded like it was 5 million, but I can't really tell.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, it's, I think it's a little bit less than, it might be 4.6. I'd have to go back to the study. And that's accumulated to date, so in the piggy bank, plus what you would get like on an annual basis. So for instance, KFHC gets an annual allocation as part of its budget, whereas other providers have it included as part of their subsidy. They have an obligation to deposit into a reserve.
Right. And that, do you mean like out to 2035 or some other date? Like you just said, that includes their annual contributions. I believe you said that.
Right. So the, Mr. Mayor, the, in terms of those obligations, they're prescribed in legislation. So providers are obliged under, say, the provincial. So providers are obliged under, say, the provincial reform program, there's a funding model. Those providers have to deposit, uh, that prescribed amount, uh, into the reserve fund to account for the expenses that they might have. The reality too is that, um, they have to account for that funding through the annual information return they submit each year, but they can have peaks and valleys as well. So the, their actual reserve account can dip down, so they, they don't have a steady state of money that keeps growing. They have capital costs they're dealing with on a ongoing basis as well.
Um, just one last question, I think at this point. The, have you modeled, like it was a little unclear to me, have you modeled a mix of solutions or have you just looked at them individually in terms of their effect? I'm sure you did that too, but have you looked at a mix of solutions? Like, I was glad to see that you looked at the different types of RGI adaptations you could make, like using the top end of OW and OESP to cut your bottom line and all that sort of thing. So, um, so that's what I'm asking, is have you looked at that plus the capital, uh, provision from the municipality and hopefully other levels of government?
Okay.
Since they did drop this on us in the nineties, right?
Mr. Mayor, so the, taking, taking it into two pieces, on the operating side, we projected out the impact first and then we tried each of those solutions in isolation and provided that to you. So, um, I guess we would, you could look at those mitigation options as a menu that you could choose a number of options cumulatively to do that. When it comes to some of the alternate rent structures, you can't do more than one and there's some latitude. So we tested a few different options to give you the range of potential there. On the capital side, um, we looked at the quantum, again, projected out the impact and then said, okay, if that equity was there, what are some opportunities to tap into the equity? And came up with some, based on some sensitivity analysis for interest rates and lending values, what you might be able to do, just to give you a sense of that particular solution. Um, so that's how we approached the modeling.
So I guess the question is, uh, and I'm sure you've started thinking about this, I'm sure staff has thought of, has been thinking about it for a bit, actually. And that is of the menu, the items, what's the optimum item mix? That's what I was getting at. Maybe it's a bit premature, but I think that's where we're going to arrive. And my intuition says we'll still come up short in the question. Because when we talk to senior governments, we need to be prepared to say, look, we already looked at all the solutions, well, we don't, you wouldn't negotiate like this, but you would know that you've looked at all the options and we're still short, no matter what optimum mix of menu items we use to address this.
Commissioner Hurdle.
And I just want to be sure that staff and the consultant are going to look at that. That's really my question.
Commissioner Hurdle.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So I believe that, um, in part, there's, there's a slide in the presentation which outlines the mitigation options and provides some potential cost savings for each of these options. Um, and I, I think you're right that at the end of the day, even if we looked at combining some of them, we would probably fall short and would have to look at, you know, significant tax increase. In terms of the conversation with upper level of government, I, I think it's going to be important that the city looks not only at advocating as a standalone, um, municipality, but also working with associations like AMO that are already putting this forward and putting the pressure on the upper level of government. So we have been working on a lot of, of those details and we will make sure that we have all of that information readily available.
Thank you.
Next on my list is Counselor Allen.
Uh, thank you, Your Worship. Looking at, uh, so the, we're, we're talking about putting pressure on other levels of government so that we can have success here. Looking at the capital side of things, um, is there another option besides more government? Is there, can we partner with private equity in order to achieve this? Are there other financial tools that maybe are outside that box of tax-funded approaches and can help us secure? I would say on the capital side, I think there are, I believe there are ways to attract investment in, in affordable housing and there are investors out there to do that. Is there a way for a municipality to engage in that and succeed?
Uh, through the mayor. Uh, certainly there are. And I think some of the, the work that's been started in Rideau Heights is a good example of trying to think of creative ways to work in partnerships to leverage some of that private equity. Um, of course, I, I mean, it's, it's a bit of a, a worn example, but, um, Regent Park in Toronto was a fairly substantial, um, example of that, where the real benefit to them was the appreciation in the real estate from when it was first purchased to when it was there really helped make that happen. So that appreciation provided equity and then in partnership with, uh, private sectors, the intensification of the property helped to generate funds to then deal with the capital problems. And I think, uh, the jury's still out whether it was net zero, um, in terms of doing on that property. But I think certainly it demonstrated, um, that there are possibilities to unlock, um, some of that private sector equity. Um, and it's really being strategic about opening up your equity to try and deal with that. So again, I think some of the stuff in, in Rideau Heights is starting to show you some avenues for that. I think the other benefit is that because of the corporate provisions and authorities that KFHC has as a local housing corporation, there's certain rules, um, that they can operate under on an arm's length basis that allow them to attract equity, et cetera, as compared to, um, say, other entities. So there's certainly some potential there for sure.
Um, and just, just following up on that, um, it, it, look, looking at the operating side, I'm, I'm wondering if we should, if we shouldn't be encouraging, uh, a greater mix in KFHC's portfolio, so, um, of more market rate rents, I guess, to help cover those operating costs. Again, I'm trying to be sustainable and I'm trying to think about what if other levels of government don't want to help us out or help us out and then take it away again? How do we, what is the best ways or what are the things that we can do to mitigate that, that, uh, tap into partnerships with other kinds of equity than traditional, um, public funds essentially? And, uh, and because I think, um, we're starting to see, uh, products emerge from this, uh, social finance sector that might be able to help us, like with community bonds or, um, e- equity investors who are looking for, who have, are trying to get out of the oil sands and into something that has more meaning and, and then hoping that we can look at that, um, as a municipality, as a shareholder in, uh, uh, Kingston-Fronnak Housing Corporation, because I think that that, we're going to have to have that in our mix somewhere. And I don't, I don't know if you have any recommendations outside of Regent Park, but that certainly is a good example. We won't see our property values rocket up at the same rate as in Toronto, but you know, it, it could happen. Kingston's awesome, so.
Commissioner, Commissioner Hurdle.
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Mayor. So on, uh, just on a couple of points that were made, so the, uh, KFHC has started to integrate more market, uh, units into their new developments, uh, which is exactly going to, to your point, uh, Counselor Allen, and will continue to do so. In terms of some of the more innovative ways, uh, Rideau Heights, definitely the way that we tried to approach it was similar to Regent Park. And again, we know that the property values are not going to be the same, but it's really that approach of trying to bring in or, or free up some of the properties for, uh, private investments and then being able to use that revenue that's generated to reinvest in the creation of, of more units elsewhere and again, mixed units elsewhere, so we can continue to leverage those market rents.
Uh, Counselor Shell.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. Um, to go back to the beginning, um, currently we have 2003 RGI units and we have to keep those. I think that's part of the reason we have this looming problem. Would that be correct?
Well, it's certainly a contributing factor. I think one of the things that we would note, having done work around the province, is that as a proportion of the prescribed units, again, we come back to this 90% figure, um, that's definitely high compared to some other areas. And that becomes important because sometimes you can utilize, uh, say, units in the federal program in that 10% to help you make up. So in other areas where, say, you had 30% market, you have more latitude to try and deal with those pieces. So, um, it is a particular issue that you have in Kingston in such a high proportion.
Uh, thank you. And, um, I do know the, we do have one affordable, well, a couple of affordable, but the latest affordable housing, um, apartment for Frontnak Housing would cost 5 million to build, but would sell for 4 million because the rents are only 80% of market. So that was one of the interesting things we learned about the whole idea of capital and, and, uh, how, once you have lowered the rent, if somebody isn't subsidizing it up to, um, a higher amount, you really, you, well, that's why we're in this position. We haven't been able to keep up the actual buildings. Um, the, the idea of market rent, I believe that's new for, um, um, these housing providers that are basically, um, providing subsidized housing. Could you comment on that? Because I believe Frontnak Housing, this is the first ever mixed apartment building that's being built right now. And actually, in a way, they weren't even encouraged to do that sort of thing till recently.
Right. Uh, Mr., through you, Mr. Chair. I guess there's, um, I have to choose my words carefully. Um, I think in traditional social housing programs, they were called market, but to be, um, to be more accurate, they're really low end of market. So they're really at the bottom end. You wouldn't, the market rents that a social housing provider charges are much lower than what you would find in the private marketplace. Um, I think the reality, so two issues, KFHC and other local housing corporations around the province traditionally have been 100% subsidized. Um, and I think there's been experience over the years and how well that works in terms of a homogeneous community and wouldn't it be better to income mix, which is why subsequent programs encourage more mixing. The latest generations of programs through AHP actually allow more than low end of market rents and only have subsidization to that 80% level. So from a carrying point of view, it's cheaper to subsidize those units. The one issue, and this is something we had to grapple with when we did sensitivity analysis on the alternate rent structures, is that if you keep serving the shallow part of the market, there's still people that need subsidization to that 50% level. So somehow, that solution of more shallow subsidy will work for some people in need, but there's still a constituency of others that we have to somehow come to grips with.
Uh, Counselor Neal.
Thank you. Um, I, um, want to pick up on something that Counselor Hutchison raised and that's regarding capital investment now or down the line. Um, and KFHC I know is, is very aggressively and what, a good, good plan revitalizing, um, their stock and, and looking to mix it as well. Uh, we're also have other municipal assets, Town Homes Kingston and elsewhere, that, that our city owned. I guess my question, uh, and I'm not an economist, but I, I would think that investing capital dollars now at 2016 would allow for some savings ongoing on operating if we're able to revitalize some of our existing stock. And I'm not sure we'll ever get as low an interest rate as we have with Infrastructure Ontario rates today, ever in the, again, in the future. So, um, is that, would, would you feel that that's a sensible route to go to, to try and protect our operating, um, liabilities in the future by investing now in, in capital?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, maybe I'll just, I'll, I'll comment, um, because I think ultimately there's a, there's a number of factors that come into play there. I think one of the things in grappling with those capital needs, um, and again, because we deal with this issue in a number of jurisdictions, we, we sort of see some trends and tendencies. Um, I think the reality is that with those, uh, capital numbers, their estimates, best estimates of what needs are going to be required. So for instance, one can say with some certainty that roof's going to be repaired every 20 years and it has a net present cost of about this amount. The reality is that maybe through better tendering, maybe your actual costs come in lower and maybe through some preventive maintenance, you can make that roof last 25 years or 30 years. So that would actually mean that you're ahead of the curve in term, against the projections that are here. So the, the active management of the asset and trying to do some of that preventative maintenance certainly pays dividends down the road in either pushing those needs further down the road or in terms of cost avoidance altogether. Um, I'm certain in other jurisdictions, I think everyone and certainly government, federal government's taken the same position with regards to infrastructure, that the financial environment now is certainly attractive in terms of making that investment. Um, but again, there's a number of factors to balance there. Um, I'll, I'll remind again that in terms of KFHC, that's a portfolio that you have a direct relationship with as a shareholder. Some of your partner agencies out there in the community, there's a little different relationship there and the lending and borrowing and decisions are really going to be theirs to make in terms of their obligations. It's not to say that there isn't some relationship work that has to be done and they're going to, um, want to come knocking for assistance to continue to stay affordable and you have your service level standards to maintain in the background as well. But, um, certainly it's a, there's an environment out there, right? I guess the other thing, I'll maybe just speak to the issue earlier that was raised about social financing and some of these other vehicles. Um, certainly organizations are taking a hard look at what those products can yield. Um, I think the jury's still out on how much you can save. So certainly the conditions that that capital comes with might be more flexible than conventional lenders. They're still looking for a return on their investment, maybe not quite as high. So there might be some savings there and there might be better terms. At the end of the day, it still costs money to service that debt. The other piece, I guess, with that is that, um, and there's been a lot more discussion about this, access to that capital. So when I was talking about lending against the equity that you have, a conventional lender might look at that portfolio and say, well, we'd be willing to lend you on a 50 to 60% loan to value ratio. If you had a more progressive partner, i.e., um, a federal fund or something of that nature that gave you better terms where you could either borrow more or at no or low interest rates, as, uh, Infrastructure Ontario is one example. Um, the other benefit for them is that they'll extend the amortization period longer than private lenders, so there's some benefits there. So a financial vehicle like that could help in this environment as well. So I think people are kind of poised to see what the federal government is going to come out with in terms of the infrastructure program to see if there's some cues here that they might build on.
Yes. Um, I'm, I'm glad you brought up the whole idea of asset property management as well. I, years ago, I was involved in Co-op Housing Project and, and it's really critical that, that you're able to set aside funds to maintain. And I'm not sure that's always been the case with, with public affordable housing. Um, I just have a quick question and I'm not sure if anybody's been following, but the mayor of Vancouver and Vancouver City Council has put- mayor of Vancouver and Vancouver City Council has put together a portfolio of several, considerable amount of municipal property. And they have approached the federal government for a very substantial commitment by the federal government to allow them to renew their affordable housing by leveraging that municipal property. Is that something you're familiar with or our staff have looked into? I know it just kind of hit the news this week, but I'm wondering if that's, if we've had an opportunity to look into what municipal properties we could use as leveraging for capital funds.
So, Mr. Mayor, I'm somewhat familiar with some of the ongoings. I think one of the interesting changes that's happening in BC now as a whole, again, I think it's important to contrast the Ontario situation with BC. So Ontario, with the downloading that happened in 2000, basically, the province divested their interest in those properties across the board. In BC, that has not been the case. The provincial government continued to play a significant role. One of the things that they're doing now on a more graduated basis is actually seeding some of those assets into the, into the hands of nonprofits. So they're doing, well, I wouldn't say it as bluntly, they're doing what Ontario did. They're doing it in a much more calculated and finessed way to ensure that that asset transfer actually gets leveraged to deal with some of those issues. The other thing, I guess, I would note is that the city of Vancouver, just because of the land economics, has had a very long tradition of being involved in projects and really does a lot of leveraging through air rights and agreements with private sector developers. And because of the tension in terms of supply there, they have a bigger stick to use than some other jurisdictions, I guess would be a polite way to put it. I think certainly, everyone wants to try and find ways to leverage municipal property. That's one of the tools that all municipalities have at their disposal, recognizing that there's a roster of issues and requirements around the council table for those things as well. So certainly, there's opportunities. The last point I'll make is that one of the things that we talked about in terms of that leveraging piece, really, when you're making those investments and decisions, we think you really need to do that on a net plus basis. And what we mean by that is that you shouldn't leverage it just to get the capital assets fixed for that. The best scenario, like Regent Park, is where you're actually able to intensify the land you already own, generate more units, and deal with the capital issue all at the same time. So it's like a triple bottom line if you can achieve that. Again, the financial requirements can be tricky to try and get there, but I think that's what you're aiming for in terms of the best-case scenario.
Mr. Leaven.
Thank you.
Just to add to that, Mr. Mayor, we did undertake approximately five years ago a review of all the city lands for its suitability for housing projects. And unfortunately, there were only a number of properties identified that would be suitable. And over those intervening five years, we have pursued them to a greater extent, but we don't have a, an inventory of city property that would be appropriate. We have pursued all those options already.
Counselor George.
Thank you, your worship. I understand that briefing stage, you prefer we ask questions, but I'm just wondering if I could have the liberty of just allowing members of council and staff that are here because it has been brought up, inclusion of AMO, another, a number of other representatives out there and how they are working right now on this issue and many others.
I think, I think that that's reasonable.
I think for councils and staff that are here, we started actually a number of months ago, working on this issue that's come before AMO. We have, right now, last week, we began looking at what tools we may suggest to the government that we could use, all 444 municipalities across the province, because we have a $5.1 billion, that's a capital B, billion-dollar problem, that we're going to be facing. So this is just one little piece of this giant iceberg. And so we are working, and actually, the timing on this particular file is very appropriate because, as the commissioner has mentioned, she'll have a final report and recommendation coming back to us on March 22nd. Our next opportunity, my opportunity to bring this before our caucus and the others, will be on March 31st. So the timing is very appropriate to bring this back up. Because one of the things I'm finding representing our municipality on AMO, as Mr. Foles mentioned earlier, there's only, I think you said, 47 service managers in the province, and we have 444 municipalities represented. Unfortunately, not all of those that are on the Board of Directors deal with the service management aspect of this. I may be one of two or three that are there. So for this particular item to be brought to the forefront, this is something that I've got to take forward, and I'll actually be starting tomorrow because I'll be making some contacts tomorrow to find out where they are in this process right now so that I'm prepared when I, when I go to the next meeting. But we're, we're really working hard to argue the points of all, all the municipalities across the province, both at the federal and provincial level because of this huge, huge number that we're facing and how, how can we recover those monies? Because one of the comments that was made last week is that the provincial government is now beginning to act more like an arbitrator does, in the fact that they're stating, well, yeah, you have a problem coming up here, but the fact is you have a tax base to go to, so just go ahead, raise your taxes. Because we're the lowest political rung on this ladder, and so we're the ones that get the heat, so they're willing to dump it on us. And what we're trying to do now is argue the point that we don't want to take this anymore, and they have a job to do in serving constituents the same as we do. So just to let you know, we are on top of it, and the timing actually is, is very appropriate. So I'm looking forward to presenting my arguments at the next meeting on behalf of not only our city but the other service providers that are out there, because they may not even be aware, a lot of them, because I have found on other issues that have come to the forefront, I've spoken to them, and I get this surprised look from other members of, on the board, because they don't have those concerns in their particular municipality or in their caucus. So you have to start speaking up for all the other ones that are out there that aren't in attendance, that aren't represented. So that's where we are with it. So hopefully, we'll, we'll see some movement over the next year on this and others.
Thank you. Counselor McLaren.
Thank you. On the capital side, we have a 1% tax levy for capital. Could we use that? And if so, how many more years would we have to keep it in order to solve the capital problem?
Commissioner Hurdle.
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Mayor. So the 1% wouldn't be sufficient, most likely, to address all of the capital investments that we would have to make. And you have to keep in mind, too, that that would mean that council would decide to probably not do roadwork and a number of other projects, that parks projects or other things that the city is trying to do. So I, I think, I mean, what we're trying to do is we're trying to look at ways to not only have the municipality invest, but also have ways to have upper level of government and leveraging funding through equity as well. So a combination of different things, but definitely that there would be a significant issue if, if the 1% was directed entirely to, to this particular investment requirement.
Sorry, I didn't mean it entirely, but I understand that if we were to add these capital problems to it, and my understanding is that at the rate we're going, we would stop doing that 1% levy at about 2013, or sorry, 2023 or something like that? Could we extend it several more years?
Ms. Kennedy.
So through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, at this point in our longer-term financial models, we have the 1% going out about another 10 years or so, and then starting to come down after that. And that's based on the assets that the city owns today and some of the forecasting in terms of what we need to invest in our own assets. So, so there is that ability down the road, but I think, you know, we're looking about 15 years out already in terms of our own assets, so I don't think there's a whole lot of room there, certainly in, in the time period that we're talking about for this.
Thank you. And if I may ask, if there were a basic income guarantee and we wouldn't need any rent geared to income or rent supplements, could we make money at market rates with the current assets that we have?
Mr. Mayor, I guess that wasn't part of our calculation in the alternate rent. I think we looked at, because of the legislative obligation to maintain those service level standards, I think the most, if I can say, severe option would be, I think, that was noted earlier, where you would top up your subsidy between the shelter maximum for OW or OS or ODSP. And if you got the province to absorb that, and I guess really what you're doing is trading off $0.20 in OW for $100 in housing subsidy, you're sort of shifting the balance back onto the province. So it's not insignificant that they would have to accept that shift back. Based on that calculation, we thought the savings would be about $1.8 million. So there's substantial savings, but it's not without challenges in terms of exceeding that. If, and I think this has been another part of the bigger discussion, and I think, again, this might be something that AMO has been in ongoing discussions with, is the whole notion of social assistance reform, the notion of how that subsidy is calculated, and certainly depending on how that change is, whether you could actually survive at market rates, you would require a more detailed sensitivity analysis to really flush that out.
And my last question, if I may. If we were to resist expanding the urban boundary and really concentrate on assessment growth, is there any positive models as to how much we could actually leverage the increase in land value?
Maybe, I think I'll just simply say that it's sort of well beyond the scope of our work, and maybe staff want to comment on that. My own experience in Ottawa, having worked at the city, they had a concerted effort where they directed growth inside the green belt as a way of promoting intensification. And I think they found that it proved successful in most instances in helping to create the critical mass and promote transit, et cetera, and utilize some of those parcels. But there are trade-offs with that, and I think they're in the process of evaluating that particular policy now.
Commissioner Hurdle.
So I'm through, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to try to answer that, but I'm not sure that it gets to necessarily some of the issues that we have in terms of aging infrastructure. So even if we do a lot more intensification and the property values were to increase, it still doesn't address the issue that we have aging infrastructure currently in social housing, and we have to replace it. So if the property value goes up, you know, the cost of construction's not going down, which means that that's translated in the rents. So I, I'm not sure that there would be really, I mean, other than the ability to intensify and promote more use of transit and those things that council have identified as priorities, I'm not sure that it would get to the problem that we're looking at from a social housing perspective.
Okay. Very good discussion, very informative. Thank you very much. Okay, our second briefing tonight. I don't see the chief, so I think it's just Scott Davis and Commissioner Legay, who will brief council on the emergency management program.
Your worship, members of council, the chief sends his regrets he had unexpectedly to go out of town this evening. But before I introduce Scott Davis, I don't know if everybody and all council members know Scott. He's a gentleman that usually sits in the back corner with Sandy Sheehan from CAO's office. Some of you know him, but if you don't know him, Scott Davis, he'll do a bit of an introduction himself and his background before he gives the presentation as well. Scott's going to give us a briefing today of community emergency management in Ontario, and specifically as to how it impacts this municipality. He'll also talk about our emergency response plan, which is circa 2010, version five. He'll talk about the governance, the structure, and the elements of the emergency management program for the city of Kingston. And he'll talk about the role of the mayor and the mayor designate in an emergency. And also, you'll be interested to know what the role of council is in an emergency as well. So without any further ado, I'll pass the mic on to Scott Davis, who is the city's community emergency management coordinator, reporting to the fire chief.
Thank you, Commissioner Legay, your worship, council. Going to take you at a fairly high level this evening because the course I teach on emergency management for elected officials is about three and a half, four hours, and I know I'm keeping you from dinner. So we're going to touch on the six different points that you see on the slide in front of you. And the foundation for what we do is under the Emergency Management Civil Protection Act 2006. And this legislates the requirements for emergency management in the province, including the various ministries such as Ministry of Transportation and Communications. The second part of the act, or what is known as the Ontario Regulation 380-4, applies specific, specifically to municipalities. And that sets the overall framework for what is the emergency management in the province and throughout the province, and providing common guidelines, practices for emergency management. Ontario's emergency management approach is an all-hazards basis. And so what we do is we look at the principles of hazard identification, risk assessment, therefore, looking at the most probable hazards, and those become our program priorities for preparedness, prevention, and negation. So for example, in the city of Kingston and throughout Ontario, I would suggest that a tsunami wouldn't be very high on hazard identification risk assessment. However, with the number of rail lines, pipelines, 401, we know that hazardous spills due to infrastructure failure or accident are very high. The city of Kingston emergency plan was issued under the authority of council as per bylaw 2010-221 in November of 2010, and the goal is to revise this into a different format in the next couple of years. When we look at the bullets on here, these are the legislative requirements under the Emergency Management and Civil Protection Act. The first one, the Emergency Management Program Committee, is a group of stakeholders that are from within the community as well as city staff, and they conduct an annual review of the emergency plan. We also look at the hazard identification risk assessment specific to the city of Kingston. And this committee also provides guidance on critical infrastructure identification as well as points on the emergency plan. When we look at this HIRA or Hazard Identification Risk Assessment, what we're looking at are the causes of emergencies, so whether they're natural, technological, or human caused. And then we look at the frequency of those emergencies, the consequence or the impact, as well as what the changing risk is, whether it's something that's becoming more frequent. You'll note here, critical infrastructure identification is our municipal requirement, and that Emergency Management Program Committee, what we look at is we identify food, water, electricity, gas, oil, transportation, communication systems, public safety and security, continuity of government, and finally, financial institutions. So we identify throughout the municipality those key areas, as well as the establishment of the Emergency Operations Centre. Currently, it's located up at 500 O'Connor in the Fire Administration Building, and the secondary EOC is located at the police station. We've also got public education that I feel is very important, because when we look at our emergency management processes, we really focus on the individual being prepared to withstand emergencies in the community, and then if there's an escalation that's needed, then it's the municipality itself. And then further, if the municipality needs help, we escalate that through Emergency Management Ontario through the province, and then we have the ability to escalate that further through the federal government. Your bottom point there, the annual training and exercise going through the practices of the Emergency Operations Centre, how we activate and manage an emergency is certainly important. And the last point, the compliance review. At the end of every year, we submit a compliance statement to the ministry, and that's signed off by your worship and myself. And this year, we were audited and received confirmation mid-January that we were in compliance. So we look at the five components that are listed here, and again, we look at a risk-based approach, look at prevention, mitigation, preparedness, response, and recovery. And one of the key ones I look at is those recovery measures, because, you know, when all lights and sirens show up and the event happens, we've got all the responders there, but typically what happens is that the recovery process can go on and on. I was involved in the debrief for municipality of Godrich because of the tornado, and they're still recovering from that, and there's some businesses that'll never recover. Speaking of which, when we look at this comprehensive program, after we take those five components, we add in to what we call continuity of operations planning. So that's looking at, most levels of government within the government itself looks at internal arrangements, how to keep on going, what I call what's our Plan B, the business strategies of the various business units or divisions within the municipality and how they keep going, and then we develop plans to guide that. Very familiar analogy would be if, out in the private world, if you've heard of business continuity planning, so continuity of operations planning more specific to governments. And from that, we get that all comprehensive management. Now, when we look at our municipal control group responsibilities and tasks, the MCG and also what we call the MSAT or Municipal Support and Advisory Team may be required to attend the Emergency Operations Centre to support an emergency situation. And I think it's key there that we're looking at a strategic level as opposed to getting into the weeds of it. The municipal control group can convene without declaring an emergency, so if we feel that there's a situation that's evolving to the extent that we need to pull some key people and partners together, we can do that without declaring an emergency. I'd also like to suggest, number one priority in the Emergency Operations Centre is to maintain public confidence, and when I say that, we look at save lives, protect health and safety of employees, protect public health, reduce suffering, protect environment, reduce economic loss, protect infrastructure and property. And if we can do all those keys of the puzzle, we maintain public confidence that we're managing the emergency. When we look at supporting the site, another aspect I look at is, think of if we were in a flooding situation, public works goes to where the flood is, and they're the ones that are gonna start putting the sandbags down and responding to that emergency. However, the Emergency Operations Centre, that's where we get key individuals together to think about, how many more people are we gonna need, how many more sandbags are we gonna need? If the site tells us that we need more trucks with sand, this group is the group that acquires that. When I look at essential and non-essential services, a good example there, I can think of a municipality previous to working here in Kingston where severe snowstorm and the mayor said, okay, let's shut everything down. And that included pulling the snowplows off the road, pulling the buses off the road. However, there's essential services such as hospitals that have to keep running. So looking at the most common routes for the ambulances to make sure that they're able to get in and out of the hospital, providing transportation for the staff, that we knew that possibility this storm would be 72 hours. So if you're gonna pull the buses off the road, how can we ensure that the hospitals and that type of thing can carry on with their essential services? Next on the list would be identifying a key spokesperson, because what we want to do is ensure that our internal and external communications are timely, relevant, the information is the same message throughout so that we maintain public confidence. Joint Information Centre is set up, and again, that allows us to work with our media partners to get that consistent message throughout the community. Now, our current model that we're operating under, you'll see all the different members of the municipal control group on this slide, and potentially, if we had a full activation, we could have 19 or 38 representatives in the Emergency Operations Centre, which becomes a little bit problematic in that trying to make quick decisions can be hard. However, we've got the support, as you can see, from across the corporation, which depending on the emergency can certainly be important. The chief administration officer is the director of the EOC on the municipal control group, as you see here, and the mayor is the head of municipal council. Counselors may be identified as a designate to the mayor should the mayor's attendance not be possible. And much of the province, as well as our own emergency management program, is going to what's called the Incident Management System Model. And this is where we've got the command group, be able to make key decisions very quickly. We've got operations, and they're the ones that actually do the work. The planning section is thinking ahead as the emergency potentially escalates and what the impact may be. Logistics section allows the site to be able to get those more dump trucks with sand, and then finally, somebody has to pay for this, and so we've got a group that works on that. One of the key aspects of this is it provides a recognized framework for efficient and effective communications to all levels of government. So if we had to escalate, we know that the province uses this model, as well as the federal government uses this model, and we know that south of us in the states, this model is used by Homeland Security and the various states. This provides us with a framework for the MCG members to sustain a continuity of operations throughout the municipality, and we can expand it depending on the emergency, and we can also retract it as required, and we get into a recovery phase. When we look at why IMS is recommended, I go back to maintaining public confidence. So when you think of complex, large-scale emergencies such as the December 2013 fire, there's a number of agencies that are involved with that. Certainly, we've got fire, police, typical first responders, but we had community services and a number of agencies working with them to shelter people. So to be able to work in a framework that's very consistent helps us. Those key roles also allow what I'm gonna suggest is a mutual aid system. So I could get a call from the city of Ottawa and say, could you assist us in taking a seat in their EOC for, let's say, operations as a sector chief, being trained in it, teaching it, I know that role. And conversely, if we were in a jam, I could call up to Ottawa, and the CEMC there follows the same framework, so could step in into the role. The other thing with IMS I think is important is that the speed of social media really demands answers in a disaster. You, as counselors, know that your residents that are in your district are gonna want information as quick as possible. They want relevant information, and to be able to get the key messages out of the Emergency Operations Centre that are consistent is important. So when we look at this slide, the adoption of IMS is appropriate provincially, and I think of examples that come to mind daily. I get a briefing from the operations sector of the Ministry of Commercial, Community Services, and it's their operations branch that provides those briefings on any potential threats that may impact the city of Kingston or neighboring communities. The collaboration aspect of it, I was fortunate enough to work in preparation of the Pan Am Games, and when you're working with Toronto, the various municipalities within the region of Peel, Hamilton, by using the IMS structure, we were very well organized in how we did that planning. And again, I talk about the ability for communities around us, the various counties or south of us as well. And if it's a widespread emergency such as severe weather, it's not gonna pinpoint target Kingston. We've gotta think of if we had a severe ice storm that was several counties wide, we've gotta be able to communicate with our neighbors. So one of the aspects of the Emergency Operations Centre in our emergency management program is declaration of an emergency. The mayor or designate may be required to make a formal declaration of the emergency to the province, depending on the nature, size, and financial impact of the emergency. So what we look at is, are we going to outstrip our resources and the escalation provincially and possibly federally to be able to assist us? We also look at, the Emergency Management Civil Protection Act gives the mayor specific powers to act during a declared emergency without the need of formal meeting of council. That's important to be able to make those quick decisions. We also look in that recovery phase, by declaring the emergency, we open ourselves to the availability of what's called Ontario Disaster Recovery and Assistance Plan, so financial support from the province. That program later this month is undergoing a change, however, we're assured that the ability in emergency to get funds is important. And another point here that I think is important is that the mayor, as well as the counselors who are required to attend as members of the MCG, we've got annual training for their roles and responsibilities, so they understand the act and the implications of how to protect the life safety, infrastructure, and the environment in our goals. One of the things as counselors, you're probably saying there, well, you know, how's this affect me? And I would suggest, in your own districts, encouraging preparedness, supporting emergency messaging through the Public Information Officer if there is an activation of the Emergency Operations Centre, as well as a conduit for sharing information with your residents. And I guess finally, if there's an interest in further education on emergency management, I do teach a three- to four-hour course, I'm not suggesting it tonight. And your worship?
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from council? Councilor Turner.
Thank you, and through you, Mayor Patterson. Thank you for your presentation, it was very informative. I live in a district that has the airport and the new expansion of the runway, and I also have rail that goes through it. So in terms of me being prepared, what would you suggest?
Your worship? I would suggest understanding that both rail and pipeline are very high on our hazard identification and risk assessment as to that consequence or impact, the frequency, being prepared for various emergencies where you may have to shelter in place yourself, and if you had to shelter in place in your home, how am I going to do that and communicate with residents? Also, understanding that you may have to evacuate, depending on the nature of the emergency, fire, police may ask you to evacuate, so having a go-bag or a kit ready, contacts, and knowing that residents are going to be looking to you for direction, how do I communicate with them from afar? So whether that's Twitter, different social media aspects that you become available in an emergency to pass that messaging on to your residents.
Commissioner Legay.
I'd also like to supplement Mr. Davis's answer to Councilor Turner. The airport also has a specific emergency response plan, dealing with its operations that Mr. Davis and Mr. Snow and stakeholders are involved with, that do exercise training, I think it's a requirement every year, Mr. Davis, and we've just had some revisions done to that plan, so we've got a new version that's just been released last year to take into account any incident that may happen at the airport because of the nature of operations there.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Legay. Is it possible that I could get a copy of this, or be trained, or get some extra information so that if any of this was to happen in my district, that I would be able to react quickly?
Through your worship, yes, I can arrange for that, both sharing the plan as well as indicating where we can find out more information for you.
That would be great, thank you very much.
Okay, seeing no other questions, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have nothing else on our agenda, we have the two information reports, just connected to our two briefings. Is there any other business? Mr. Clerk, laws or bylaws?
Moved by Councilor George, second by Councilor Turner, that bylaw one be given as first and second reading.
Please vote. Matt Carries?
Moved by Councilor George, second by Councilor Turner, that bylaw one be given as third reading.
Please vote. Matt Carries? Motion to adjourn, please. Moved by Councilor George, second by Councilor Camden. Please vote. Still one person to vote. Please don't leave without voting. Can every, oh, everyone. Thank you very much, we are adjourned.